And call the meeting to order, I got 7:29. And the agenda, the agenda is new and today that has some added things. So I will comment once again. Let's begin the approval in minutes. Or make the motion. Second. Discussion or questions? On the whole favor. Okay, sorry, the treacherous reports.
Order revised yesterday. We have our plan for them to present during the reading. As far as the foreign expenses, national grid, well. Right, it's lower than last month. That's one thing. You can national insurance group. Okay, so this is our insurance scheme. It does have a new rider for a small bit of our coverage because we maybe are not going to be able to get more coverage than that until we move. Here, so we at least have a small amount of $273,000.
So.
Well, they were just. They definitely was not. Two seventy three. Of course, did anybody have any question to say details?
Question or comment? Not on favor.
For Trevor Warren, seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and twenty cents, most of it being from operating, a small amount from getting a grant. The biggest expense in this large category is, as always, posting materials to your subscription. In addition to that, two things to note, one was those active networks, this is technical support, computer security, cloud storage, four and eight. That was all of that. So maybe then there's a new subscription called Low Before Inc. Allows for ongoing, right, and local computer security training events. So it's moving to out of the ordinary or expenses. Does anybody have a question?
Yeah, I'm just curious what sort of the gift and grant was something that was not budgeted.
Okay, but it's something that we ongoing, we have a good budget.
But how do we want to? You're gonna wanna include it in our budgets moving forward? But it's something we need to be accountable for. There's several things that we're going to need to be accountable for.
Any other questions on the board?
Motion to authorize maybe sign. Go ahead, no, go ahead, Mr. Man, and outside. Thanks, sir. Okay, anybody have any question, comments? I have one. Go on, find somebody else to sign me on last one.
Uh, no, we have it in the office.
Oh, I, uh, just, I don't wanna just to lose it.
We authorize, we decide the rest.
Yeah, the bottom, what I want. Any further questions or comments? If not, all favor.
Financial reports, profit and loss, I saw it October 4th. I've been hearing seventy six percent over total income. Uh, for right now, we're doing some budgets at this point. Two months more changes, we got the anticipated $2,000 expense at least, very much. Other than that, we expect to be all of one, and have five sold, anything that comes in is going to be interesting. How many expenses? Now, the real issue is that we're over budget, so these expenses, the utility costs, the maintenance costs, where, and also now insurance costs. Personnel costs, which by far are the biggest component of the budget. We paid twenty of the twenty six payrolls and are running under budget for salaries. And if it's, it's hard to assess because we have to pay our mis. We will be making like in the year, but we will, we anticipate being under budget in the personnel line for the year.
Of the year, okay.
As a balance sheet, it's where we would expect to be, one twenty eight thousand dollars, one hundred and ten thousand less than last month, which is fairly typical, especially in a one annual one. It's a, yeah, we're so appreciate one senior at this point. Anyway, have any?
Let's have a motion to reduce financial success percent. And. There you go. Okay, any question? Comments, anything else, if not, all favor. Reports.
Two policies for that, 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 that last few months. The general accounting practice policy and the missing policies, the purchasing policy. All right, so.
No rate, rotation, just a rate.
Yes, and there's. So. Far over that, multiple fines due cones. No, sorry, yeah, not the, yeah, yeah, first thing policy, yes. Purchasing policy, we feel is, I mean, I was like, um, the general accounting who wants to look at it, that's what we're working on. There's no work to be developed, that's right. The first thing policy, where we feel is pretty good and would like to get that policy. This is the first thing policy talks about for posting the destruction district before, um, how our personal was below the state's minimums. We, except I don't think we're quite still the state minimums, right? Or we have.
I thought we were trying to get to state.
Oh, we didn't, okay, I just couldn't remember. Yeah, so the state levels are bins and formal written votes and such, so. The mini chart, what that. Claims the requirements, but we're setting it to this. I think it'll help going forward, especially we get into the group of getting the building looked at and repairs made, this would be good to have a place for that.
Any questions or motions for certain purchasing policies?
Looks like we've heard the numbers. And we've heard this year, especially.
Any discussion? All favor. Yeah, I don't think it's still working. I've read through this stuff. There's a lot there.
Yeah, there's, there's, it is an overview.
Accounting. Oh, there's.
Make more work, people analysis, but it's, it's a.
Good. Okay.
We discussed some personnel things, but.
So we're, we've got an executive session at the beginning.
Yes. It's very new, man. Oh, yeah.
That, that, uh, word, that's under old business.
Yeah. Look.
Um, we had our service committee meeting on the third, and we discussed, um, writing up an RFP for, um, our strategic plan and having the RFP to, uh, purchase with, uh, procure, procure, uh, a consultant. So where is that process of?
Um, what do we?
Yep. We're working with the timelines for, um, the whole RFP and coming back and that door and.
Yeah, I think we also discussed fine free.
Right, we discussed, um, the fine free, um, having the library, um, so we have some recommendations, next steps, and definitely, you know, it's a discussion that we had in the past as a board, and that's what, something that we want to incorporate for the new year. Um, we'd be starting in January, and, um, what we discussed was, um, you know, the amnesty for, um, things that are outstanding, like what would, what would happen to, what would happen to the bodies that, you know, people said. I think the overall sense is that there are other, um, libraries that are fine free and people can bring their overview book back to those libraries and without any.
You know, what lines that are on the books at the end of the year, what are we gonna do with those? I, that's what I look at, is what you're saying, when you say amnesty.
Right, true, that's what I think we are looking to discuss and, you know, come to an agreement with the board. I think our recommendation as a service committee would be to.
Just abolish fines at that point.
Woo! So there would be an amnesty, there are a lot of stuffs, I think that's, that's where.
Okay, so I'll, I'll hope Denise not to verify you until the end of the year. Or after the end of the year. I just brought twenty books back.
Oh, geez. Well, I mean, there's definitely that population of people, and there's people that don't, right, I mean, it's, it's not a lot of people that, um, that we're looking at, um. Another thing we, we were discussing was the, the fine free, is it for books or is it for the larger items? So if you borrow a laptop, we'll bring that back, wouldn't it happen? So is it? Right, so I think it's still, we're still discussing.
Okay.
Is it everything, or is it the?
I, I would say, just my stand, I would recommend that the decision of that type of thing, the whole policy, now, what is fine free, what is not fine free, if anything, you all completed in the month of December, November, so that you can oversize it in December.
Yep. So we, what we need to do is have official board approval that we're going to fine free on January 1st. We have been working internally, and we had a staff recommendation brought to the service committee, and then, um, the recommendation was that there was amnesty for all, that actually changed the staff recommendation. Amnesty for all, not originally just a screen version for access and service research, I amnesty for all. And then we talked about, um, the big ticket items that we should keep fines in the first year. So that would be all of our special items.
How much money are we talking about concerning? I'll have to.
But it's, there's a, there's a list of things that need to happen that are all documented that are. I don't have that yet.
I think that all needs to be done by the November board, and so we know in the board meeting in November, exactly. What is fine free, what is not fine free? Board to make the decision should know the amnesty, how much amnesty is out there.
Well, those decisions, I mean, we really need to do that. It changes a lot of our, of our timeline of things if we don't have the internal control to make those decisions. Say we are not doing amnesty, or we're just doing, or we're doing everybody. You know, I, I would say we should go with the recommendation of the committee.
Which I think is everybody, right? You're not gonna do Marshall and.
It was with, it was everybody.
Yeah, that's about it, so, if you're going fine free, and, you know, Upper Hudson is basically fine free. As opposed as I am, that, I will continue to make that point. Uh, I think it's gotta be everybody, you can't complicate it.
Yeah, because there's a lot of details to make that happen, um, and just for books, right? It would be for everything except for our special to be.
What else is?
So we have, we have hotspots, laptops, libraries, things.
Those are special to be.
Those are special, so that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, but, but videos, uh, for no more videos, but DVDs and.
Books, video games, anything that's considered a regular collection, you know? You know, it's been around long enough, and I've many of them, we would not charge fines.
Is that the Hudson fine free for all books? Basically, what it is, is it's out of the twenty six libraries, about twenty four. Okay. So for all practical purposes, it is.
The last of the rental count.
So Jill, are you saying you just want, you wanna be able to make that policy with the recommendations that the service committee made? As in, the service committee has already made the recommendation, or there's more work for the service committee to do? What is your recommendation? I don't think there's more work to be done to, for us to move forward to clear amnesty, like, either we're in a wavelength of, or we're made fines.
Well, and I think one of the things we talked about at the meeting was our budget is fine free.
We already made that decision. We sort of made that decision.
Right, so this is much, right, that's what's, this is a.
This is now implementation, but there are the finer points.
Right, I know, I'm just saying that, you know, I think focus is on the amnesty, we are fine free, the budget has been approved by this board, by voters, so it's more about voting about amnesty and.
There's a lot of details which I can absolutely bring you reports to the board of what's happening, how we need, you know, just to give you an idea when, when you're deciding which pieces are gonna be fine free, if libraries, there's so many details, it's, you know, to make that happen. We have, we have probably seventy different datum types that we have to deal with, and there are all these different parameters, different things. And it's every library, you know, so we'll be doing it based on library materials or for residents, our residents, or all the residents. So there's a lot of little details like that that we're gonna have to figure out. We, you don't have to do that, that's an internal operational piece, it's too. Um, just permission to move forward with this. That we're gonna be fine free January 1st, and that we are going to, if you want amnesty for old fines, then, then we do that.
See, I, I, I'm happy to have a vote on fine free, it's really hard for me to vote on amnesty, because I have no idea. It's a, maybe it's twenty seven thousand dollars, maybe it's two thousand, that would kind of.
Make a difference.
Make a difference to me, so can we vote and say we go fine free, and then we vote on the other?
Yeah, amnesty.
Separately, because I, I just really feel. Rotation made for that stuff there's. Um, I.
We would not do amnesty for replacement items. Um, I, I can't imagine that there would be fines. We're looking at, just in terms of total dollars, we, we're collecting about eleven thousand dollars a year in fines. So if there's more than that, there are things that we need to kind of wipe off anyways because they're not being collected. So that's about the maximum that we'd be looking at. Is it collectible or is it not collectible?
But.
Usually, we're collecting things that are pretty quickly, we're not collecting digital stuff, so stuff is hanging out there.
But when you say for nine free, if you don't bring back a book, you're still responsible for the.
Oh, yes, you're still, you know, you're still gonna. We're placed to be charged or replaced. Those fees will still remain, we wouldn't wipe. We have a lost item or damaged item. We're still responsible for that.
We've collected like seven thousand so far this year from our eleven thousand budget line. Yet it, it still doesn't tell me what's hanging out there.
Yeah, whether it's twenty or thirty thousand dollars.
It sounds like it's not, or it was, that's uncollectible anyways, it's just coming over from the past years and whatever.
We have fines that are still, every now and then, somebody will come in and will say, wow, this is a fine from Horizon, that's required here every seven years. That's every now and then, so there's still stuff out there, um, hanging out. You know, that's mostly not collectible, you know, you might get it, but those are also the reasons that we're going to fine free is because those people typically are not coming back to the library because they're embarrassed, or they don't want to be here, you know, so this is a way to get people, we see this as a way to get people to the library.
So how do you determine if it's a fine or it's a replacement fee? So no, they don't come back, and you don't bring the book back, and then replacement?
Yeah, it's a replacement fee, and that's not getting.
And, well, and I, I think, and I think, I'm waiting to hear what the policy is, because I know in some places you have one renewal, two renewals, and after the second renewal, it becomes that it's lost and your account gets charged for it. Basically stops, but at least that's my sister told me, that's how, Charlotte, or another.
There's a lot of different parameters out there that libraries do, we're working through over the internal committee. Um, you know, just to give you an idea, we're, we're recommending that we should decrease from three renewals to two renewals, which is in line with most of the libraries.
Thank you.
But now, it's thirty days, uh, thirty days from the, um, last renewal, like from, whenever that date is, thirty days from now.
But did we hook back?
Then, then, that bill gets, yeah.
Then the bill gets removed.
I guess what I'd like to know, um, in terms of access to libraries, so they have a bill, so they didn't return their book twice, we have bills and replacement books. They're ability to.
Yes, we have a five dollar threshold, so if you have five dollars on your account, you're no longer eligible for privileges.
But once the fines are gone, then that doesn't matter.
No, it's still, it's still would matter if you get a book charged to you, then you're not eligible for our license. It, it, it was interesting, because Albany does it after thirty days, and it's, and it's more restrictive than fines. In a sense.
And so that people are notified about this, and you're.
I don't understand how this works. Well, there's a lot of details to hammer out. Okay, um, people are always notified, even now, they're notified with reminders of when their items are due, and letting them know that it is up to, you know, contact your area and what more. Um, when the library, when it becomes overdue, they'll get a notification saying that you have an item. But I, I have to figure out if they get an over, if they get a notification saying your item is now overdue. They get a reminder when it's due, I don't know if they'll get one saying it's overdue.
You do currently. You're saying it's overdue?
Yes.
Do you?
Yep. Okay, then you'll still get that, that wouldn't change.
And overdue means, overdue will mean that you are being charged for the item. Your account will be charged for the item.
After thirty days, so it won't be immediate, immediately now, you would get a fine, and then after thirty days, it would become billed. The only difference would be you wouldn't get a fine, it would become billed after thirty days.
Yeah.
So by taking, going from three renewals to two renewals, and kind of building in that same kind of thing. Before it gets, you know, gets returned to, potentially before it gets returned to us.
So why don't you take out a book and not actually. Test, test.
So is the process written somewhere, this for, from Charlie, make it work again?
Just, I, I've got a, I've got a list of, of things that are working on there with a timeline of what we've done, and what we haven't done, and where we are. Essentially, we, we documented a list of reasons to go fine free, now we lose all the data to be able to present that in a full presentation. So we're looking at, um, reasons to go fine free, increase patron access to materials and services, reduce the inequitable impact of overdue fines, improve patron relationships with the library, optimize library staff time. optimize library staff time and increase efficiency, reduce number of cards blocked due to the fine amounts. Late fines are not effective, studies are showing that small fines do not make a significant difference in material return rates. Revenue from fines is diminishing the shifts in lending e-content, um, and the recent implementation of automat- automatic renewals, and it's not a sustainable funding model. And patrons who use the library exclusively for print and physical items should not be penalized, no fines are being charged right now for e-content barring. And e-content is moving to be approximately forty percent of all checkouts right now, so. Um, that's kind of our reasoning, you know, broad, we, we narrow it down to, you know, something that's collectible. Um.
Again, I think, I think we will, as you were saying, we did a budget report, because I think we were agreeing that we, we're gonna, that we're to find free for next year.
Yep.
So.
So the big question is, are, so what, what we are recommending is that we keep the patron lock threshold the same, five dollars. Renewals will decrease from three to two. Um, only specialty items, well, group finds, library things, stories to go, STEM kits, laptops, museums, passes, hotspots, interlibrary loan. Uh, we will continue the one, one day grace period. And waive existing charges for fines, not for fees. And then we can use this as a marketing tool, fresh slate, it's new year, come back to the library.
That's the amnesty piece.
That's the amnesty piece. What is out there, like, you think it's, you know. I, I can pull the report and, you know.
Find out.
I can, I can, I can find out, let you know, I, I don't think it's. So, if we, we can move forward.
So can we make a motion that says we, we support go find free on January first, and we direct you and the service committee to.
Implement it.
Right? Is that what you need?
I think so, because I'm looking at kind of the, the long terms and the dates that we need things to be, by December second, the law rules need to be amended, get official for it.
Well, the service committee also made, we made the recommendation not only to go find free and to approve that, but also to grant amnesty. Not to say that it's a finite thing that happened, but we already made that recommendation.
Yeah, well, that, that's a recommendation bringing to us.
Right.
You guys have discussed it and done it, and so that's it.
But you, did you base the amnesty on something outside of?
Well, we knew the numbers that Jill shared, and the, um, the research and the data, and our own personal opinions about the philosophy of the library, weighing that against what we actually gain because of that amnesty and such, so. We felt that it was an informed enough decision that we were comfortable to make the recommendation. That is not to say that it is a be all end all, but we, we did discuss it at length at the, at our service meeting.
I still would like to know the numbers.
I don't think we knew the actual number, on further, you know, what's outstanding for that, but.
No, I didn't give you.
I just feel like we're responsible for the fiduciary term in the library, and I would.
That's true, that's right.
Feel we're irresponsible if I just don't have a charter.
If going along with that without knowing what you're.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean philosophically, I, I don't have an issue, but I just really think we have the responsibility.
I think absolutely, that's on my list of things, because I want the data before, you know, there's on my list of things that need to happen, but I don't have that for you, right? Um, the piece I think that really drove part of that decision was, we're talking about why we're going to find free, and now we're talking about, well, it's, it's a financial decision, we actually made the decision to not make this a financial decision, we're looking at equity.
Well.
And so the people that it impacts the most are the people with outstanding fines, so are we now, why are we going to buy by not providing amnesty?
Well, I.
Just feel like I would.
From a, yeah, I think from a fiduciary position, it's going forward, you, you make a decision and you do that, but it's a totally second decision on what you do with what's on the books.
Yeah, just like, so, so we're authorizing it with knowledge, and I, I think that's.
I mean, if we meet, we meet in November, so you say you absolutely need that, so I mean, we could authorize to go find free in January. But, and at the November meeting, we could, based on the information you provided us, be, have a motion to go amnesty or not, which would, I assume, be in fine free or December second.
Or partial, you know, if somebody owes something on a laptop.
That's a fee.
We would.
Wait, wait.
No, there are fines if you don't bring back laptop, there are fines if you don't bring back hotspot.
So we're recommending that you don't do that first, especially, especially.
Unless, so.
So there would be no amnesty?
Well, if you give amnesty, then it has to be written in the fine, because when you say amnesty for fines, that's for all fines, unless it's documented.
Well, I mean, I think that's what we need to vote.
It would be the same.
To say this is amnesty for those items that will be fined free in January would be my sense, not amnesty for items that.
Right.
Detailed, like specific.
Yep.
So would that work? So one motion now, and then another motion in November?
Sure. That works.
So a motion to go find free effective January first, twenty twenty-three, this serves me and my great.
Feature.
Fine free for.
You can save books and materials, but.
So it would be all items except for special shit.
Amanda makes the motion.
I'll second it. So, yeah, I don't. You'll have a list of everything, you know, this is how many renewals you have, this is the fine threshold, this is, you know, you'll have that all in the document. We're gonna have to update our list of, um, you know, parameter changes to, just like, and then two renewals instead of three, so those are the things that we're looking, we'll have to make sure that we.
So do we as a board, do we just say, we've decided.
No, that, I do that. But, but I'm going to reiterate, I think that whole thing needs to be done. The target, our, well, then we're reading just as a date, so that it's documented and pub- publicizing people to get used to what the new rules are.
Well, and I think, I just, you know, I'm on the library board, and I envision when the board starts to get out, that I could be asked a lot, which I would, as well, really want to know.
Exactly what it is.
What it is, so I can give.
Yeah, and I will give you everything. Most likely, you're gonna have to send them to the library, just like lending rules now, we have to send them to the library, because it's complex, there's a lot of different lending rules, and there will still be a lot of different lending rules. But the, what I will give you are.
This is even a broad, even a broad brush, right?
Absolutely.
I'm not gonna get into even the cases.
Absolutely.
You said you have to have, well, everything done by December first or second anyway, so I'm guessing.
Yeah, so it's a tight timeline, because there's the Thanksgiving holiday in there too, so, um, we can't wait until then, but I guess I wanna know philosophically, are you in favor of amnesty, assuming it's a huge amount, or not? Because that will dramatically change our messaging.
Are you, are you in favor of amnesty?
And, which, which means you can renege on.
Of course, of course, I mean, of course, that could happen.
And I feel the same way.
That can happen.
I don't, I don't think I've ever written a blank journey. And that's a sensible, what it is at this point.
Philosophically supportive, okay.
And now I have a motion in the second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor? There.
Thank you.
Sammy? You have one more thing, at least on this agenda? Racial equity training.
Right, oh, okay, yes, so we did talk about that, and the dates that we came up with were November third, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth.
So they, they came back to us, they couldn't do those dates.
Okay.
So they can do November twenty-ninth, December sixth, and December thirteenth. Now.
What happens if you miss one of them?
Then it's tar and feathering.
Because I'm missing the first one, I'm gonna be on an airplane that night.
I'm going to be on one too.
The first.
The twenty-nine, twenty-nine, and it would be one on the sixth.
What are we looking at for the new instructions? I'm waiting to hear back, but I told them anytime after five, so they didn't respond to me with the actual time yet, they just responded with those dates, their December calendar is already booked, this is all they have, so if we wanna do it this year, these are the only dates, if we can't do it these dates, we can wait until next year. Those are the dates, now I will say, it sounds like a couple of weeks can't make it, and also, one of those dates is our December board meeting, and these dates are also, it looks like we'd have Monday meetings, Tuesday. So it will be a full, you know, it will be a full schedule to do this.
So, twelve thirteen is working?
Yes, December twenty-nine.
Are we totally?
I give you a revised calendar.
Are we promoting group before, or?
Yes, it will be five o'clock.
Joe, do we have a new training?
This is the, um, the team group, and Upper Hudson, um, ha- is providing free training for all library boards. And I went through the training, Kami went through the training, on, with the Upper Hudson, where there was. We went through five, just.
So, yeah.
Yep, so there were different options, and each one of the three.
Three meeting options. Yeah, I'd like to.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so it's in person, and they're coming here, it's in person, and they're coming here.
Yes.
How many sessions in this?
Three.
It's three, so it's two sessions with the consultants, and then it's one session with Mary and Tim, some of the consultants, and trying to tie it into, okay, now how do I, how do you filter this down into a library work?
You also moved, um, or we talked about holiday closures, that was the last thing.
All right, well, the one thing I would say is, I would push it until next year, so at least two of us, they can't hit. The first one, I, I feel missing a third of it in the beginning.
It is two thirds, and it's hard to project the session when they talk about using maybe.
So let's, let's push it, let's push it, hopefully they'll have more openings, further out.
Can we see if that works? Um, I'm just throwing it out.
At some point, we'll drop the strategy department, which is like, let's get this on the way, but I'm fine if we don't do this, but it's a lot to do by the end of the year, all around the holidays, and you have so many things to do. So I think it's okay if we push this on.
All right, we can.
March starts budget season. I was, I would try for January.
Who would try?
I would call, I would call Mary.
So she, so we should still leave these dates, these are not real dates?
To get back to Mary and, I don't know, I told her to, you know, to put a little.
Or, would it be possible to accept maybe one of these dates, like if we all agree that that's a good date for everyone? Just because one is bad, doesn't mean we have to throw out all three, does it?
Thirteen, three, and the fourth being.
The fourth.
The one.
And what about the sixth, were we available that day?
One.
Not the sixth, and.
One will close case.
Not the sixth, yeah.
I can do the sixth, but it's only at first, it's not.
So I don't know if the thirteenth would work for the consultants, because they were just those first eight, November twenty-ninth, December sixth, and then Mary and Tim were December fourteenth. Which we could continue if they're available that day.
But can Mary and Tim go first, or do Mary and Tim go last?
They have to go last. They're easier to schedule, so then we couldn't continue with the thirteenth, if we didn't already do the two sessions. I can, I can go back to them and ask them. Um, what other, you won't need to? I think it'll be easier, if you don't mind, because we already have an email chain going, so just email her, I can have an issue.
No, no. All right, find out what other three dates, or a couple sets of three dates.
Okay, we'll do this over email.
Okay.
And I'll send you the final dates. I was gonna.
Some spring of twenty twenty-three. I'm wondering if they could maybe propose like ten dates, and then maybe we as a board could fill out a due notice.
True.
And then that way, we don't have to go, yes, this one, no, that one, so if they propose multiple dates, then we only need two of those, and we as a board could go in and say when we're available, and find what works for everyone, and then if the other one is easier to schedule, we can do that later on.
Let me, let me find out what they can do.
And Joe, could we piggyback with another library that's for that? Have they really?
There's not that half, I'd have to see.
When I first contacted Tim about this, it was, wow, you guys are real jumping on this thing.
No, I think you will not jump on.
Six months, they have been.
That's a good question, especially if someone's local and.
Right, sure.
And say.
You know. Do we wanna do it with another library? Do you, would you wanna invite other library boards to do it with us, if, you know, chances are, we have to have them here anyways?
It has to be here, I would want it here, but my thought would be absolute and probable.
You want to. There.
What I would wanna see happen is us trying to coordinate with more people, so if we can find dates that work for us, then we could invite others, or vice versa, if there's
No.
Right.
Something going on with other libraries, and, you know, that works for us.
Yep. And I would say the smaller the better, and we did it for our staff, for staff, though, it was pretty, but that's a big group.
Right. Yeah.
It worked better. All right, let me find out, and I'll leave you out. It'll be, we'll finalize the date before next year, but it'll be a.
Maybe you said there was one more thing.
We, we talked about, um, the holiday closures, Jill mentioned that there were some dates where we weren't synced up with other libraries, and it was hard to staff, so she just proposed, following a more, um, comparable schedule to some other Upper Hudson libraries.
It was Memorial Day and Fourth of July, no, Labor Day, labor day, of being closed the entire weekend.
Really come to a conclusion on this.
No, no, and I think there's.
Anything else, questions? Kami, is that it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, Jill, directly to the board.
Okay, so, there's a couple of things that I would like to draw your attention to, but first, is, in addition to my. But first, is in addition to my direct manager work, I've handed out, um, the Vision twenty twenty two, the US Library, or the New York State Library, just, um, the Regents Advisory Council on Libraries, just this, at the end of the year, and they're going around now, and, and doing sessions with this community number, or, if they're, um, this is the strategic plan for state libraries, for, for, for the New York State Library, and this is the part of the Regents Advisory Council on Libraries, Vision twenty twenty two, and maybe focus groups, and all of these are just. So, I thought it was important to share it, because it's a lot of this stuff we've been talking about. It's probably going to be reflected, I would guess, in our strategic plan. That we kind of work through these types of priorities. Uh, there are shared values, universal access, equity for all, resilient communities, passionate advocates, and innovation engines. So I'll leave, that would be read on your own time, but I just wanted to let you know that that was in there, and if you are interested in learning more on the New York State Library website, um, or Department of Library, no, there, so you can find all of this stuff. And they are the webinars discussing them. This is the New York State Library's strategic plan. Not the state library, but this is for regents, for border regents, for New York State libraries. So this is the New York State Division of Library Development, essentially, this is saying, all libraries, all types of libraries, this is what everybody ought to be working towards, this is our vision for libraries in New York State. And in here, there are, I'm not sure if there's in here, the special, yeah, special libraries, fellow libraries, academic libraries, school libraries, and there's different breakdowns too. So this is the rest. I mean, I think that's part of the universal access. Number of right to service, library to bring essential tools, um, to support universal access, be champion, intellectual freedom, and right for people of all ages.
So this is shared with every library in New York State, or do you?
Every library.
Uh, well, like that you went out and taught it, I mean, they expect.
They are sharing this widely. They're sharing this.
I don't know what they're producing, so it's.
Okay, a couple of other things coming up, November fourteenth, you will be getting a an invite very soon over email, and both Michael and Loxas too, uh, for a volunteer reception. At the library, we are going back to our in-person volunteer reception. It is Monday, November fourteenth, from five thirty to seven, and I think I put that on your list of updated dates. Other information that's not in the board pocket that you should know, New York State Department of Labor on September thirtieth announced that the minimum wage for twenty twenty three is fourteen twenty, that's a seven point five percent increase. Uh, our current wage schedule for twenty twenty three, which hasn't been officially approved yet, but this was included in the budget, has our minimum base rates at fourteen sixty three, which is forty three cents higher than on the level page. Open meeting log, there is a training that we were looking for, that's still not posted, I followed up to see whatever happened with that. And I will follow up again with you when I receive that information. Uh, October first, we reopened meeting rooms to the public, this, you know, we, we finished our AV installation in here, so this room officially opened with AV. This was installed, and completed, actually, right, it's great, plug and play, super easy. Um, expects that I may need to come back to with some revisions to the meeting room policy, there's we had developed the meeting room policy to remember when we were initially going to charge for meeting room usage, and then we revised it to take out charging for meeting room usage, but there's a couple things in there that we may need to revise.
All right. Revising to not charge, made as a temporary measure, you mean about the that could be two days.
Yeah, direct strategic.
Or budget?
Or budget. Sure. Okay, slowly, slowly.
It's very easy process. Yep, I, I actually. It was actually a very easy process, easy setup, clean down. Very, I didn't use it, me using a tablet was, um, my part, but it was a, it was a very easy process, and it was very, I think. Um, I actually expected a week longer with your back than it did, so kudos.
Yeah, so there, I mean, there have been some mishaps and, you know, but I think it's all internal, I don't think it's anything external, so it, it's been a, a smooth rollout, and I would, I really would like to thank all of our staff, because everybody's been informed of our list, and we changed. There were several internal procedures that we changed to make it smoother for user to book a meeting room and to show up, let into the meeting room. Now you don't have to wait in line at the reference desk, you can pass the stat numbers, which made it a little more complex, but it's, it should be a much better experience. And Carrie and Selena together delivered seventeen hours of faculty procedure to, um, to be able to train everybody, um, um, definitely want to thank them for all their work. Yay, done, it's great, we're so excited.
One question.
Mm-hmm.
Go back to the project.
Almost, it completes the AV portion of the project, yep, and, and next piece is the, um,
What's?
the gallery install, and we had it, we had that, so
I wish.
It's going to be a whole other.
Okay, and, do we have a schedule for that?
That's internal, I'm reading, and all to be able to do that room. It's, it's kind of an opportunity to, so that's the only piece to worry about. And that's how we close out, but I can pretty much prepare to close it out, unfortunately. Um.
Yeah, we're doing everything internally, and we're like, serious.
Right, right, so I'm around closing, we're all done with all the with all the other pieces.
So you think we can close it out before you, too?
Um, if that was the only thing I was working on, yes, but it was, I really want us to get QuickBooks Online, so yes. Uh, let's see, a couple of other things, visits are up over last year, fourteen percent, so that's good news. Total borrowing is up sixteen percent over last year, but if you look at the physical, um, if you look at the, um, checkouts, they're only eight percent higher than last year, so but then if you look at our digital usage, it's, it's fifty percent over last year. So we are not plateaued at all with our digital usage stats, you, you know, this sixteen percent increase is largely due to auto renewals. Because renewals increased seventy five percent over last year. So that's another piece that we're, you know, looking at with the I think, these is, now maybe moving to, to renewals, it would impact our circulation, total circulation, because renewals are part of that. You know, so if we do that, our circu- total circulation will probably drop, but it may be a correr experience. For, so that doesn't matter.
I, I think that's a, you, you go for doing the right thing.
Exactly.
We're not just going to match myself.
Absolutely. Uh, so circulation at the checkout desk is up forty percent, forty five percent over last year, but at the drive-through, it's down thirty percent. People coming in. So people are coming into libraries, so that's good, that's what we want. Love that, um. We still have two thou- over two thousand items go through the drive-through, but it's, there's a question. Still waiting on the, on the audit, I'm going back and forth with them a lot, they have several weeks, um, for finishing up. So usually we hope for this meeting, but it's like, it's, it promised me it was going to be at the end of last week, but it's still working on it, so hopefully I'll have the final final draft. And, and I'll just send it over to you once I get it. Oh, September was library cards, I didn't want, a hun- we, um, a hundred and one library, new library cards, which was great, I put a breakdown in here for you, so you can see where there are some.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, do we have adult youth cards for SCOTAC?
No.
SCOTAC, you will just get cards?
We just get cards, so we don't know the breakdown.
Okay. And, um, just so I understand, when you issue someone like a North Greenbush adult card, what kind of card do they get? These Greenbush cards that?
No, an Upper Hudson card.
They get an Upper Hudson?
They get an Upper Hudson card, so they don't get full privileges here, well, I mean, they get many privileges, but they don't get full digital privileges. So, so they don't get hot off the press, which is in-person circulation, or in-person print, and they don't have, um, and so, they don't have access to ancestry, or, or museum databases.
Or museums.
Or museum passes.
And aren't they, they don't get I thought that SCOTAC could use Greenbush adult cards for, if there's a.
Uh, sometimes, usually it's summer reward.
So is that what my card is, or is it something?
That's.
My card, yeah, it's a card.
My card is a youth card that's limited to three items, there are no fines, so we've had no fines on those cards for several years now, and it's intended for youth that come in without a parent to sign on their card. You can't check out anything but books, it's a very limited card that, that we rarely give out, because it's, it's you want people to pull access, the resource is limited, but it's something, you know, they, they don't care if there's.
I have that. If a person, a North Greenbush adult gets an Upper Hudson card, do they ever get counted as a North Greenbush resident? In the statistics?
Our statistics?
In anybody's statistics.
Yes, everybody's statistics, they count it as North Greenbush, except for the circulation that's being here, that's captured here. Would we pull our statistic numbers? I give you statistics every month, and it includes anybody who checks out items at our library. I can pull that same report with the parameters of where their residency is. breakdowns there.
I keep track of that. And then you could pull East Greenbush residents, how many East Greenbush residents had library cards?
Yes, I pull that every year, so that's in the annual report, resident versus non-resident cards.
That's even true.
Jeez.
Thank you. Thanks, Jay.
Now that there are no longer fines, hi Charlie.
Hey, Charlie.
Hi.
Now that there are no longer fines, it doesn't really matter, but people could have both an Upper Hudson card and an East Greenbush.
No. You can only have one.
Where is that caught?
In the system, because we have there's only one record for each person. There should be, I mean, it's, you know, there's data work, there's documents, correct?
Because at one time, I remember there was a discussion, okay, you find yourself out here, so then you get an Upper Hudson card in Albany, and and, and you just start using that.
I mean, somebody may have an Upper Hudson card, if, if, let's say they live in East Greenbush, but they work in Albany, they may have an Upper Hudson card. But if they want to use our databases like they have access to because of residency, they'd have to change their card to become an East Greenbush card.
Something I'm trying to change at Upper Hudson, I thought an Upper Hudson card should be a temporary three-month card that you get, so you have meeting access. Then your record should be sent to your home library, your home library should issue you a card, so the Upper Hudson is, is not. But it went nowhere.
Yeah. There's two. So here's your notes.
Okay.
Two, two other new projects, just reading challenges, draw your attention to, we lo- we did a stock launch of, um, two new, two new reading programs, one. You're probably familiar with a thousand books before kindergarten, now we're doing five hundred books before middle school, and a hundred books before graduation.
Is it set up so normally, like, do they go on and get a sticker, or?
Not a sticker, there's all, I, I
I know, I saw us, the beat stuff, beat stack.
Yeah, just like the winter, summer reading challenges on Instagram, I don't know the actual.
Somebody hits like one of the milestones, he becomes a library.
Yes.
Get his prize, that's just the one.
Yep.
Look, can I just, I, I, IT security audit, I, I, I'm on that new report, and I just wanted to know, um, when they, when Carrie thinks she's going to identify someone that can do that audit, because my understanding was that we had to have that audit in order to get the kind of insurance that we.
So we've been, yep, we've been actively working on a lot of that stuff. So we have, uh, we've been in communications with several different companies who have been sort of doing a walkabout audit, I will. We, I think the recommendation is not going to be a full audit, because it's going to be really extensive, and we would, if we spent all the money on that, for the new deals, we wouldn't have that. So instead, we've been talking to different companies to see what they think we need to be doing, and then getting all the pricing for that kind of stuff, and, and working with, we do have an IT consultant already that works for us who has put together some stuff for us as well, so it looks like, um, we're looking at Azure, Azure, which is already in the budget for next year. And we're looking at, uh, that may allow us to completely ditch our on-premises server, and, which would get rid of, um, the security risk of on-premises. Right now, we're cloud-based, we're but we, but we have the on-premises server for basically QuickBooks Desktop, and there's, you know, whatever thing, we really don't need that one extra layer right now. We're looking at potentially getting pricing from, per pricing, um, from Microsoft at non-costed pricing, which it's so that will be eighteen dollars per year for a person, instead of six dollars per person a month, which is making that, you know, a big difference. So we're trying to figure that out, it's always, it's very complicated, just talk to all these resellers, because nobody has a person even talk to them, but us. So if we can afford to move to Azure, then we, they're saying that we can skip a possible stopgap measure that you found for whole director authentication. BOIP dot MS would allow us to have MFA codes to send to a Gmail account, we created specifically for that that can be shared without adding whole director authentication, services, a COMS per message. That can be shared without adding virtual director authentication, the service has a cost per message, but we have a discount code. But if we're going to do Azure Azure anyways in twenty twenty-three, then it's a big learning curve and we really should try to. And that's sooner than we can. Other cybersecurity, looking at Huntress. Which it looks like it's almost all of our security needs and it's it's kind of like an anti-virus, but more robust than what we currently have is Bit Defender. We could get rid of Bit Defender if we put Huntress in place, but it's it's pricey, so we're we're looking at whether we've already done that. She, Carrie's saying between Huntress getting a monthly security update plan with Jeff, who is our consultant that we work with right now at the networks. He can up, he can provide more than he provides now to be more proactive in doing the security stuff in this, and he's been doing this very basic security stuff. And it would cost more what he could do it. Um, MFA and Azure possibly would defend her business, knowing more and policy guideline updates, we would definitely be insurable. But we're still working on the cost proposals for all of that. Was she maybe doing six months, can the thing, or are you comfortable with the timeframe? She is, she has made this her priority project, so I, she doesn't know how completely able to, she's a. She's always.
Can you do this at the same time as the critical songs?
They're two totally different things, so yes, she's not doing critical songs.
I understand, but it's all computer stuff, so I'm just asking my questions, you're gonna do the same.
Yeah. Totally different. Yep. So we're making progress, but I don't have any proposals for, you know, spending yet. Thank you.
Okay, ready?
That's it.
Um, no personal on this one. Um. Old business. Patient study. I believe last month you held off. Um, your full audit until everybody was here, because that's what I recommend. Right, and motion, I think all the necessary is a motion to do it. Except that are approved, whatever it is.
Make a motion to accept like two twenty twenty two section studies. Also, I get all this free.
Thank you. Anybody have any further discussion on that? Ball, favor. Nobody opposed it, no. Um, backflow preventer. We have received the engineering proposals for that. Some GPI, I mean, I guess that's some. Uh, other emails today implied that. It made the indication that they were applying that they were going to everything. They are basically the design engineers, can get the approvals through the town and county and wherever else they have to do. They put the design together, it's actually what needs to be done. Then they help us get pricing from contractors to do it. And then they monitor the construction, allow us being done and make sure it's been done. It's the design services contract proposal, which we're looking to approve to might actually be four thousand dollars. It does not prove we had. A six-year retired architect and an engineer threw out a number, yes, of ten thousand dollars that it might possibly do this work. So thank you for what it's worth, but that piece will come once we put it together, pricing there. What is different is that the proposal now is not just backflow preventer. Here, which is in the role of back of the other meeting, uh, where our service comes in. But they need an R P C type check valve system in the mechanical room for some of the one pieces of equipment. So it'll be two pieces. Um. They've had discussions with the town. And what's anticipated to be needed and all of that. So my recommendation is I saw a proposal, I was like, I think it's acceptable.
But we need a motion.
I would say, since we're here, we have everything here, it's a motion to approve the contract, the GPI for their proposal for four thousand dollars.
Not capital, so. So.
And and this money, this money as well as the work is going to come.
allocate four thousand dollars in capital reserves. This is a kind of my.
Related to the backflow preventers missing. I can't believe I got missed. But twenty years later, not much you can do.
We're lucky it didn't fail. You were lucky it didn't fail.
We don't, well, what that does, basically what that piece of equipment does is any water comes into the building cannot go back into the system. Into the town system, so basically it stops potential, say we polluted the water here. And then it's got back into the system, polluted the town system. As far as I know, it's been a requirement as long as I was working, which is in the seventies.
So did you make the motion?
I can make the motion, I very rarely make motions, so.
But then you had a six-year retired architect.
Yeah.
I was able to go back.
Where are we gonna find what in there?
The times to find out if it really was missing.
Yeah.
I was there and I, the town didn't, the town just wanted a a certification, a test certification. And I went looking, we have two test certifications on the backflow preventers. And it was missing one, I looked at it, I go, oh, it's not going to.
I know, you're.
Yes.
Whatever, just YouTube thing.
Let me second it. Okay, I'll take it. And I think the third year, third item here, one that you put in here was just, uh.
Yeah, so I, I emailed everybody that, um, I'm glad Tom's here, thank you, Tom.
Team effort.
Spencer County.
Credit Mary Harris for driving our memory.
We have an, we have an additional thousand dollars coming in, um, for funding for the library this year. So thank you, and I think we 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 need the board to accept that and then I'll sign my contract. I should accept. I'm sure everybody will vote for that.
Yeah.
So, motion.
I'll second it. Or what I was thinking, we needed authorize, we needed.
You authorize the director to sign the contract for. All right, library service, any residents for this, of course. I don't know if we need to get that detailed with them to accept this. We think they're coming for one thousand dollars and. Has the director to sign the contract?
Okay, you got the motion, you have a second. Ball, favor. I mean, that's. Okay, okay.
Okay, so I missed this, but I wanted to read to you guys, and this is from a patron who tagged us recently in their Instagram post, this was just, we just had a Friends book sale. And we raised about sixty-six thousand dollars in the survey, and the friends also just kind of being like toward this meeting, and they have some new board members that are coming in. Or senior high school groups coming in to do public relations, they have two people who are coaching a database committee. Uh, they have our new advocate, U Char. And Julia, both of these, these will all be voted on for next meeting.
You're spewing Charlie's.
Oh, I forgot, Charlie, I. Charlie, I'm so sorry, that's what happens here, I'm sorry, no, okay, no more friends. But this this, what I'm gonna read to you is is related to the Friends, so listen. Um. Danielle Bries writes, support your local library, who are we to deserve all the glory that is the library, I love and pitch time to EG Library. You can count on me to be being there two to three times a month, it's one of my favorite places and I'll do everything I can to support the wonderful ladies who work there. Volunteering, donating, and shopping. Three easy ways, three easy steps to give love and support to the library. My personal favorite is hitting up the seasonal library book sales. It's a win-win for everyone, the four of us saved over three hundred dollars and all the money earned from the sale goes right to the library. I know, three hundred dollars is a boatload of money, we all came out with stacks of books, we're wicked excited to read. Check out the flat lay at the end to see a few of the stories we get to dive into, My Hall, Wicked by Gregory McGuire, Winter in Paradise by Ellen Hildgren. Winter Solstice by Ellen Hildgren, Eleanor Elephant is Completely Fine by Gail Cunningham. A Man Called O by Frederick Bachman, What If It's Boxed by Becky Albertalli and Adam Solera, Code Name by Erin Ballhart. I challenge all of you to go and do one small thing to support your library, the smallest good deed can lead to a bigger moment of hope. So thank you, Friends.
So Charlie, that that leads us into you.
Yeah, no, that's, uh, that's.
I have to report.
With the time, I won't believe her, the points I think Jill hit on the two major things I wanted to talk about. The sale, uh, was a big success and thanks to everyone who attended and especially to the the volunteers who helped out, it was really appreciated, it went real smoothly. Um, and as Jill mentioned, uh, we've got some new leadership, uh, new folks interested in 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 serving in leadership and cabinet roles. Uh, for the Friends, so that's good to see engagement. And we're trying to really structure it in a way to, um. To spread the wealth in terms of of folks being able to be engaged in in decision-making and 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 volunteer activities with the Friends, so I think it's gonna bear. Bear a lot of fruit, get a lot of good ideas, um, so super excited about that. But again, thanks to Jill for reading it, that's, uh, that's cool to hear, uh, the insight from the, you know, the the specific examples like that, that's awesome.
Hey, is that it for the Friends?
That's it for me, that's it, yeah, thanks.
Ed, Tom?
All right.
All right. You got to sit here and swing for quite a while.
I wish, um. So things going on in town, there's more roads getting paved, uh, that, how will be ending up, the end of this month, beginning of next month? Because of when the plants close. Yeah. Weather and plants closing. Uh, I would say, hopefully, tomorrow. Rise up, you anything, but you are. One up by me, it wasn't on the list, but. Well, sometimes, tearing up dictates you gotta fix it. If you're gonna really, might as well do it. Um, we're also starting in the town of East Green Bush. Voluntary banner program.
Oh, nice.
Stay tuned for that, it's gonna probably, like, for. Right now, because of the fact that we got lard coming in and it's gonna be hard to get banners up in the snow and all of this stuff, so springtime is when we're gonna be kicking it off. And, uh. Have all the information out. At. We're also having October, holding month, holding awareness month. And.
What, what?
Bullying.
Bullying.
That's what I'm sorry, see, unless you speak more clear, I mean, I thought you said bowling.
Said bowling.
Yeah, only one this year.
Get aware of.
Bowling, man. Uh, and also November twentieth is gonna be recognized as adoption awareness day.
Three things, uh, Chinese executive is going to present his budget to legislature on Thursday, so we're staying tuned with that, what act details, remember we get them. Uh, the emergency services tower, for those people who are connected with, uh, so rescue teams, emergency preparedness teams. Is moving along pretty well in the town of North Green Bush, it's gonna be a state-of-the-art tower, it's on the same site as the old tower was and and on fire services and emergency services. Are really looking forward to it, that's on schedule hopefully as well, we'll probably, I'll just save all these things towards the end of the year, probably spring realistically as well, it'll kick in. And work continues on the new county building right up on the road here, and, uh, you know, what you're saying. Um, hopefully maybe the end of the year, beginning of next year, all these things will probably converge around the same time, so a lot of it.
If I have to file something at the county extension. As far as. Have a lien release on a loan that has to be filed with the county, CEFC sent it to me rather than.
Right now you do.
Yes, so that I, which will go to the county.
At this point, you do, yeah, in the future, you might not have.
Yeah, I leave that with one of the offices that was.
Right.
So it'd be more convenient if you can hold off for a few months and.
My desk is sitting on my desk, so.
Yeah, it's gonna be a lot of good, good, uh, things to, like, for example, motor vehicles for people living in the town of East Green Bush, you can go, uh, currently on Mondays. And it'll be full-time, the first floor of the county government, well, five days a week. Uh, you know, so that'd be a lot convenient for a lot of people, because sometimes like maybe you go in on Monday. Or Tuesday, I should have gone on Monday, so the SCODAC office will be closed, uh, more than a go, they they usually, they're on Tuesdays. Where on Mondays, all that will be going to be in the county building, so any, during regular business hours, you'll be, you know, able to contract your, uh, morning, morning business.
Where is it located?
Uh, Route Four, right up here, you'll grow zone here as a leaning building.
No, but that's okay.
Right, so, north of CEFC. Over.
Yeah, or Duncan Dons.
I know where the pizza places there, the.
It's fully green.
Well, well, I agree right now, it's like across the street. Like Duncan Dons and Stewart's. You have to get in. Okay, now you're.
Yeah.
Sure.
So if they move DMV here, will there also be a DMV in Troy?
Yes.
But does it be too full-time?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Is there any intention to expand CDT and allow access to people?
Well, we, when I was with the town, we always tried to get them to go up Route Four, and, but I think now with having the county offices here. I think a lot of us will revisit with CDT, it just makes sense for them to come in and do it, it didn't make sense for them to do it before. Because there wasn't the ridership, potential ridership, and we would think that this might be a kind of a tipping point where eventually they would see, yeah, we wanted to participate in having a route going up in Florida. Because it pretty much stopped right now at the, uh, the Walmart, at the, uh, yeah, uh, the Walmart, not the Walmart, the, yeah, Walmart, Walmart, yeah.
We're getting people walking here now who have no access or just.
Yeah.
We've gotten people who need to go into shelters and.
Yeah.
And, um, that's another issue, but but they have no transportation for us. We had two in the last one, which is very different.
We've had some preliminary conversations with people at CDT, they're all numbers mixed, once the amount of traffic is generated, we think that was a problem. Good question.
You think that's great, um. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yep.
I was happy to see that, um, the one that goes up to SCODAC, I used to take that all the time. Um, they, you, we used to run Monday through Friday, now that, now that Amazon's out there, so they runs.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
All the time, which is great. It runs all, all time, which is great.
It's all the numbers are in for it, yeah. And fortunately, thanks to all the new construction, there's a lot of traffic studies now. So the numbers are relatively much easier to get than they would be in the past. Thank you.
Good, thanks. Tammy?
Um, yep, I have a couple of things. I, I really enjoy the Upper Hudson Board. Um, it's just a diverse group and, um, I don't know, it's just, it's just a really nice board. Um, one of the things that Tim, who is the director, um, and I don't know Jill, I did send this to you and Michael. Um, the American Library Association has an initiative, um, called Unite Against Book Bans. And, um, it's, I'll just read it, what, what Tim wrote, just a small, um, where he would like to see libraries, um, kind of coming together. It's a well-developed effort to counter the small but vocal minority advocating for censorship of library materials across the country in all types of libraries. Joining the initiative as an organizational partner does not cost anything, but it is an opportunity for Upper Hudson to stand up with like-minded organizations on these challenges to our core values. I'd like to see Upper Hudson sign on as a partner and would bring the decision up for board consideration at our November meeting and then sharing with, um, your own library if we would like to join that initiative and then there'd be signage sent to the library and put out that we stand with that organization. Um, so that's just something. I keep going with it, you know, follow up once I get a little bit more information. Um, just another thing, uh, there's new leadership, so Antonio is not the president anymore, so Susan Kaitell is and, um, she had kind of a, a vision of like what she wanted each trust board member to be doing, um, more than just coming to a board meeting and kind of reporting back what, what is your library doing or, you know? So she thought maybe like partnering with, um, somebody else on the board to go to other library board meetings introducing ourselves as Upper Hudson library board members, saying, is there anything that you would like Upper Hudson to, to know about or what can we do for you or, you know, we could be, you know, your liaison to Upper Hudson? And I mean, and I know we, we all kind of said, well, i- if there was some project or if there's something that Upper Hudson was trying to promote, I could see, you know, going in and staying in someone's board meeting and, you know, just having a few minutes to introduce yourself, but it was, you know, there's still some thought about that. Because I know if you needed anything here, you would go to us and then Upper Hudson if you needed something on that. So, you know, to go knocking on someone's door like me and like Fred, who's the treasurer, I'm not sure, you know, we, we weren't sure like about that, but it's just something, just to be out with community and, and going to libraries that, um, you know, it's not every library on the Upper Hudson Board, so.
I mean, I think that would be valuable for the libraries that don't have a representative. I mean, you have a representative, but we, you're representing medium-sized libraries in Rensselaer County.
Right. Right.
Not just.
Right. So it would be Brunswick, here, North Green Bush, Rensselaer and Stanley. Those were the ones that I would go with Fred, who's our treasurer for Upper Hudson.
To be.
He, he's, isn't he Brunswick? Where's Fred from?
He used to be on Brunswick Board, he's the longer of the board, he's just a community member. But he's.
Yeah.
Just, yeah. But, do you continue?
But then on the negative side, I did, like in email that said the Upper Hudson fee went up 5% unexpectedly.
Because this is the U L, U L, U L. So, but.
It just came in the contract with the increase. Which happened for.
They have a new.
They created.
Cost share, right, is that there?
Yeah, it's, it's where I have expressed my disdain. Because it, you know, rises us for like.
You read about U L?
Sure.
So, um, there are two components that make up U L. The first is the 2023 U L fee chart. The fee formula has been revised to better reflect equity among the lend, uh, among the member libraries to keep individual libraries' annual fees as reasonable and consistent from year to year as possible and to generate sufficient support for Upper Hudson services to all of the member libraries in order to help cover the increased cost of delivery, meaning the Arnoff, Arnoff contract, the N O B E contract. Um, all member libraries will see an increase in their 2023 U L fee. A full explanation of the fee structure is included in the U L agreement. The second component is the 2023 to 2026 U L agreement between each member library and Upper Hudson. Both the 2023 fee chart and the agreement form are attached to this report and I can give it to you. Each library has been asked to review the agreement and have the board president sign off on it, on behalf of their library. I've asked the libraries to make every effort to complete the process on or before January 1st, when the new U L term officially begins.
Officially, we don't really have a like standard, the dollar amount is not affordable, it's, it's, it's very reasonable. The piece that I'm in disagreement about is that it could have used other parameters for lending to really be equitable. Instead, it's based on just your physical lending that's happening at your library. And it doesn't, it could take it and say, okay, by the cardholders, so if you have a, an U L cardholder that's from Green Bush or whoever it is, it would be part of their chart. Uh, you know, they'd be paying for their residents' use and, and because really it's delivery, covering delivery. So the cost of delivery here is not just our community at all, but. So some of the libraries are getting, you know, 3%, or they're a small handful that are getting a larger, it's 5% or 7%.
But you say, you say.
It's not, it's huge dollar amount, it's the.
Yeah, but you say 3%, 5%. Is it based on real numbers or?
It's based on real numbers, they're, they're accurate numbers, I just don't think they're the, they're accurate numbers.
So is, are some of them 4% depending on their real numbers and some of them 2%?
No, do you have the chart printed? Yeah.
I, I don't want to take up time here tonight.
I know, yeah, I know, but, yeah.
Just, can, can you send me a photocopy?
Yeah.
Simple.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I'll, um.
Yeah, I don't know how much people want to get involved. When I was at Upper Hudson, I started protesting about the formula basis and then just going off the formula for several years. And, you know, there's, things changing, so. So, give it to Jill, Jill will get it, just to, just, we shouldn't take any more time.
All right.
Are we the highest?
No.
Uh, oh, we're, we're in the highest percentage in, in case, I'm sure, but there are libraries that have higher, bigger libraries.
It is.
Yeah. So the percentages are two, percentage change in these are 2% or 5%. There are one, two, three, or five libraries that are 5% and the rest of 29 are, um, 2%.
It's North Green Bush. It's North Green.
Of course. No, not those.
No, two, North Green Bush is 2%.
It's two.
And there's postal U L member?
Postal House member.
Yeah.
There are two?
There are 2%.
It's my three times.
Yes.
I'm just gonna worry about you guys a little bit, yeah.
So. Yeah, we, so it looks like they, they base it on your operating receipts, total operating receipts. That's a percentage of the service fee and then your total circulation of materials behind your head and body part.
This gets much more complicated because I've looked into it for years. SCODAC, the way we're counted is for public support includes the money that pays, is paid to us from SCODAC. Okay, that, that's public support registered to the 16,000 East Green Bush residents. SCODAC's 12,000, 13,000 residents aren't counted at all. And since we get that support, that's high support, so we're considered rich, richer and, and so we get hit with the higher fees.
Yeah, we're at 7.05% total. All of these are ready to bring down. The one is at 13.68 in us.
Okay.
So I have.
Oh, you love, you love.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Um, does anybody have anything else? We still have to take the session.
Same here, same. Thank you. Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Great seeing you.
Thank you back again.
All right. I'm going Phoenix. Nice.
Nice to see you.
Um, thank you. Hi, Anne.
And.
Diane.
Yeah.
Do you need to make a motion now?
Yes, I need to make a motion. Amanda, who's to go into second session at 9:10?
And don't forget to come back into executives, or back into the meeting after, right?
Come out, right, back and then close the meeting.
Yeah, okay.